Call the order of the City Council meeting for City of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, October 15th is now five o'clock. City Council, please call the order.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Riappell.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does Attorney McCormick please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum and opportunity for members of the public to address the City Council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff boards and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. If you'd like to address the City Council, please come up to the podium to do so at this time. Mr. Gertie, join.
Mr. Wilford's not here, so I would like to see if he's coming in contact.
Okay, thank you, sir. I see none. Approval of minutes for December 24th work session, 24th special meeting, October 1st council meeting, October 8th work session, summary of the October 8th closed session. Move. By Demers, second by Riappell. Any questions or discussion? See none. Roll call, please.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Motion is carried. Scheduled bid lettings, none. Scheduled public hearings, none. Consent agenda is items under consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. If any member liked six through eight polled. I see none. Entertained motion of six through eight, please.
Move six through eight.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Knowledge of receipts of reports of officers, boards and commissions, regular meeting minutes of water, light, power and building commissions for September 18th, 2019. Communication there is none. Old business, there is none. New business, consider approving the final plat of the Van Nuys CRC's resubdivision with recommendations of submitting a digital file to planning office and fee paid to Polk County for recording. Your motion.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Riappell. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess when I looked at this, the only question I had is, we create or by plating it this way, do we create a space in between, I'm trying to remember, D and E, the north two lots, that becomes kind of a...
Unbuildable space because it's an easement.
It becomes unbuildable, but it also becomes unenforceable. Well, not unenforceable, but difficult to enforce because 20 years from now, hopefully, we'll be kicking up retired or whatever, and the next people won't have working knowledge of this. All of a sudden, something gets put on there, shed or whatever, and we end up with some of the issues we have with easement issues in various other places where we don't see them and we don't exactly know where the easements are, and we create a problem for ourselves.
I do believe we do that. I did visit with a developer in regards to purchasing that additional property because an easement would sit in between what would be his buildable lot and a space that he could also build something on. We do not allow fences or buildings or those types of structures on an easement. He was okay with that. Visited with water and light engineering. It's not a typical thing that we do for new lots, but for existing lots, it would be difficult to stop him from doing that, I guess. It would be up to you as to whether or not you wanted to.
I guess I just raised it as something I noticed and, you know, all of a sudden you come up with a big chunk of land and people that are going to be there or potentially want to use it or see it as something. And when someone's not watching that 15 years from now, I just foresee something being built there. So I would, I mean, it isn't something I think we can necessarily just shut down for our lack of enforceability, but...
The combining of the building inspections office with the planning office, having us both in the same space has kind of eliminated a lot of those issues because there really wasn't a good connection between what we were telling them they could do and what the building inspections was doing because they didn't necessarily have all the plats. Now everything is available. Every time we have a new easement or put a new easement in or something similar to this where we do a certificate of survey or we have an easement in between buildable space, a copy of that is kept in the community development office and a copy of that we put directly into their building permit file. So all of that is, you know, shown now. It doesn't necessarily make it easier, but it does help with the communication with community development kind of encompassing, you know, from start to finish, so to speak.
And just two other questions. The first one is, can we put into that PUD anything that ensures that drainage will occur across there? I just, the way it's laid out now, I wonder if, you know, how those back line, the back lot line is going to be kind of offset. And I don't know what the drainage does back behind those houses exactly, but I could foresee maybe just a note that says you can't impede any drainage, backyard drainage from the west.
We can request that on the plat. It's not a PUD currently. It's ZONED R1, so...
Okay. And then the last one is, if it's a replat, does that, is that fall then under our development and requires sidewalks?
No, it does not.
Okay. It would just be...
Because they're two existing lots, all we're doing is moving lot lines.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're creating three lots, but it does not fall under newly platted property.
It has to be newly platted?
Yes.
Okay. So if we take it and it's got, it's on a plat, but it's just one big lot and then they subdivided into 20 lots?
Then we would require sidewalks within those 20 lots.
I'm just saying, I mean, at one point, what's going to be the, I understand this and I don't think we need to push on going from three, but what's going to be that standard when someone goes from one to 10 or one to three or...
When we move lot lines, we typically do not.
Okay.
When it's one outlot and we make three lots out of one outlot, then we would require a sidewalk, so...
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Helms.
Just a couple real questions, please. Who's going to be responsible for taking care of that easement then? Will the homeowner do that or will, or what?
Well, right now homeowners are responsible for taking care of the easements that are on their property.
Okay, so it's still be just part of his property, just can't build on it?
Yes, he just can't build on it.
And then the other thing is, if we approve this and we're approving for single-family homes and not townhomes or duplexes or...
He has not rezoned it, so right now it's R1, which is single-family zoning, which allows for a church. If the church were to be turned into something residential, it would have to remain a single-family dwelling. If they wanted to turn it into a duplex or something like that, they would either need to come back and rezone it for two family or more, or they would have to obtain a conditional use permit or a special use permit. Either way, both require public hearings and would require notification of the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else have any? See none. Roll call, please.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider approving amendment to the Cooleyview PUD plan to allow the R2 zoning requirements for twin homes, townhomes with zero lot line setbacks.
Move.
By Demers. Second by Helms. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Demers.
Thank you. Just wondering, with the decrease in setback for these lots, will that cause any issues with snow removal or easement issues in the front?
No, it would not.
Okay.
We're only reducing the setback, the sidewalk setback in between the buildings that would share a common wall. So that would remain zero. The rest would be six. The current PUD that was adopted in 2011 required a reduced front yard setback. So as far as snow removal, those types of things, I don't think it would be any different than if it was single-family.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? See none. Roll call, please.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 12, consider final approval of Emerson Estates 3rd addition with recommendation of submitting a digital file to the planning office.
Move.
By Demers. Second by Grassel. Any questions? See none. Roll call, please.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 12, 13.
Thank you.
Consider authorize the city administrative clerk treasurer to issue payment of recumbent bills and payroll.
Move.
By Demers. Second by Riappell. Any questions or discussion? See none. Roll call, please.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Suspension of rules to consider purchase of pump. Is there a motion?
Move.
By Grassel, second by Demers. So in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign. Motion is carried. Mr. Stroudall.
Thank you, Mr. President. So with all the water we've been seeing recently, we've run into a few issues with pumps. For our pump capacity, our EQ basin is very near capacity, so we've been pumping out there the last few weeks. With all the floodwater that's coming up right now, we also have some issues with our swale north of town just filling up with water. We have multiple pumps pumping right now and we're trying to stay ahead of the game, but if we should have water come onto Minnesota Avenue in that area right now, our six-inch pump is being used on the EQ basin. This is a, you know, an event that doesn't occur often, but it could have happened often in springtime. Springtime events, which we're looking at possibility with the ground being saturated right now as well. So there's, we were looking for pumps, looking for different discharge hose. We weren't able to rent a pump to use, but Minnesota Pump Works has an eight-inch pump that is 2018 pump with one hour on it. They would sell it to us for cost, which is basically a 10% discount, so the total will be $62,000. It's also when we did our lift one maintenance, our rehab on lift one this year, there was no way to bypass previous to that, but now we have a bypass in there. So if there was ever an issue where we had to bypass lift one, pump failures, pipe failures, something like that, we would be able to, with this pump, be able to set up and attach to that bypass and pump out of the manhole. One of the other nice features with this, and we also have this on our six inches, that it's a dry, they call it auto-prime pump. So you don't have to have people monitoring it 24 hours. As long as you have fuel, you can just let it run. If it runs dry, which it does down on, down by the Point Bridge a lot of times, you know, it's not going to wreck the pump or anything like that. It's a quick priming pump and it can run dry. This particular model two is a lot like the one that we, the contractor used for our bypass when we did our lift one rehab, where there's a shroud around it so that it knocks down some of the noise. So if you use it in residential areas and stuff like that, it's not so loud down there. It does come with a five-year pro-rate warranty, one-year full engine warranty. And then there's also the capability of running floats on it. There's two floats that come with it. So if we had to lift station and went out anywhere in town, as long as we could hook it up there, we could use the floats to monitor it as well too. So it would be, again, we wouldn't have to man it during those times, so... I think we would get a lot of use out of it. Our six-inch pump, we already have over 2,000 hours on that pump. We use it at the swimming pool. When that went down, we use it to transfer water from our primary to our secondary during the decommissioning project. We use it during flood times down in the low dip there by the bridge and then a few other stormwater instances too, where it would have been handy to have another pump like that in those rainfall situations this summer. So that's what I'm asking or requesting to purchase. Is there any questions?
Mayor.
So you believe this would either help to draw down that swale to the north end or may take the place of a pump that would be used for that purpose? And we could significantly take and put a dent in that, in that water, in that swale?
Depending on the conditions. And right now, what we would probably do if we got that, the earliest we could get it is actually, we could get it tomorrow. We would probably take our six-inch pump off of the EQ basin and then either move it to the swale or get prepped if the flood forecast comes up. We're supposed to get, we have the potential, I should say, to get more precipitation Saturday night, Sunday, Monday. And in that case, we would set up to get ready to install a plug because you have to install a plug down by the Minnesota Bridge prior to the water coming up or you can't get the plug in. So in that, then we would have to put the six-inch in the, you know, right away because any kind of rainfall or snow melt or anything like that, you know, you'd have to pop it out. So we would probably get that ready to transfer over there once we had that eight-inch in.
I know since the five-inch rain and even as recently as this week, I've had requests from citizens of the north end to see if we can draw down that water north and see if we can get some flows out in that direction. And so I sure support this if it would free up a pump that could be moved into there. And also in case of a failure, we've got another backup that would be ready on standby. This is really a unique event and I think it's good to have this capacity in our inventory.
Helms.
It says here there's no suction or discharge hoses. Do we have hoses for that or is that going to be another expense? Yeah, it would be more of an expense. Eight-inch hose is a lot easier to come by. Like our 10-inch pump, we have a few Navy pumps, but they're not self-priming. They take a half a day to get ready. You can't leave them really, I mean, without unmanned and stuff like that. They're considerable pain and even to get parts and hose for them is a big expense. Eight-inch and 12-inch pumps are much easier to get. Pretty much any decent-sized pump vendor will have eight-inch. So we'd be looking at, you know, a few hundred dollars probably in hose for that pump. Suction hose and then we'd need, you know, probably 60 feet of discharge or something like that.
And you can get that locally then or...
You can get that locally, yep. The suction hose, if they didn't have it in town here, we would have Minnesota Pump Works pick it up on their way up with the pump if we were to purchase it. The discharge hose, you can get that just in Grand Forks.
Okay, and then what about freight on it? Are they bringing it up? Are you going to get it or...
I guess we haven't decided. Freight, it's just a trailer, so if they do, they'd pull it up. They'll probably come up anyways because they would show us, kind of do a run-through with the pump. They want to be here and run it for us and show us, you know, all the ins and outs with it. So they'd be on their way anyway, so they'd probably just hook on. I just wouldn't want to see them charging us, you know, $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 to pull that thing up here when... I wouldn't think that would happen. Typically, if they have to ship it or something like that, they'll put that right on estimate. And I don't have that for you right here, but we did get one today and there was no freight on it, so... I wouldn't assume that they would charge us to do something like that.
Because my next question would be for Carla. Did you find the money somewhere for this?
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we spoke earlier and I told you, I'm generally in favor of going ahead with this. Couple of things I thought about after our conversation. Talked about that, you know, Minnesota pump doesn't rent specifically, but did you tire like Acme or United Rentals? Because I know, I know you can rent them from there for a month for, like a six-inch probably for $3,000, $4,000 if you can get it. I don't know what their availability is.
Yeah, there, I guess I can't speak, I didn't talk to them personally, but I asked wastewater staff to do so. And they said that we couldn't get a pump or rent a pump around here. We tried with Minnesota Pump Works to see if we could rent this one or just even demo it for a bit, but they didn't want to put hours on it and they don't rent them. So we were unable to do that. We checked other surrounding cities as well for different pump parts and Alexandria and stuff like that and with no luck, so...
I guess, you know, like it's, the math works out. If you use it 10 times or once a season for 10 years, you're spending, you know, half of what you would pay and you don't have any old pump at the end of that. You know, if we could do it, I guess, I would, I'd really, right before you pull the trigger on it, I would make one last concerted effort to see exactly what would be available. Honestly, the problem with that is if it is a time when we're needing it, probably Grand Forks is probably needing it at the same time and they're probably snapping them all up, which is a downside, I understand, but for...
That's kind of the problem with these situations altogether, you know, when we have a big rainfall and stuff like that. It's, you know, can we get it and how fast can we get it? You know, that six-inch pump, you know, we never, we didn't have anything really like that before we got that and it has been unbelievable, really. I thought it would be good for us, but it's been excellent. I mean, obviously that many hours in one year, basically 2,000 hours on it a year, we use it and we've used it in several different locations as well. So I think this one would be, would be the same.
And that does lead me to my second question is, I know this is a good price. I did a little bit of checking on it. It was $60,000 for this is a decent price for it. But would it, because of the success we've had with the six-inch, would it be better to go and try and find a six-inch for two reasons? Number one, maybe it's going to be a little bit less money on the front end. Number two, when you start talking about hoses and discharge hoses and suction hoses and all those type of things, if you have the same size, now you have kind of the same parts that you're working from, that kind of stuff. I mean, is the two inches actually going to be that much more beneficial than if we tried to, you know, have two of the same type of pump where you can kind of maybe have one long discharge and a couple of short ones and then you don't have to buy four discharge hoses?
We've found out that same thing. Right now, we can pump around 3 million gallons a day with our six-inch. With this eight-inch, we could pump 4.5 million gallons, so that's pretty substantial like for our equalization basin right now in getting that down. Some of the other things is if we do have to use this for other, I mean, it would be a multipurpose pump, so if we had to bypass a lift station or something like that, the eight-inch would be more beneficial, especially when we're looking at lift one, you know, a major lift like that using it. The price of the pump back in 17, late in 17 when we bought our six-inch, the price on that was a little over $64,000, so that's more than this pump is now and I'm sure that cost went up as well. So I think it would be, I think we'd be paying more for a six-inch right now, but that is a, that is a good thought, consideration to keep everything the same, but yeah. So we did take into consideration, but...
And like I said, I'm generally in favor of it. I think it's, it is a need. We live in the bottom of a river valley. It's, pumps are important. Just ask the Dutch, right? So, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything this time? Now entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
By Johnson.
Second.
Second by Grassel. Any other discussion? See none. Roll call, please.
Helms.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Vedder.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mr. Mayor Gander.
Number one, our hearts go out to all the families and businesses that have gotten groundwater into their homes and also to businesses. It's awfully frustrating when you have cleared everything out and the water is shooting in like a little fountain inside your home and you look around. I remember back in 97, we had the same thought when there was just water everywhere. Where can this water go? Will we ever be dry again? But of course, an event like this with five-inch rain and all the snow and all the groundwater is unprecedented in my lifetime and most of our lifetime around this area. Talked to folks way older than me, if you can believe that, who've said they've never, ever seen a harvest this wet. Farmers who have no name, of course, never seen a harvest this wet in their whole lifetime. And yet here we are and making our way through it. And so that brings it also to thank you to our, all of our utility crews and all of our emergency crews who have done so much. I've watched you folks take a look at the greater picture and making sure that we're in good shape, but also responding to neighbors and individuals who have concerns adjacent to their properties and how you manage that and keep both eyes alert and awake and open and your crews motivated. It's marvelous and the service that you're giving to our people is excellent and I thank you for that. And finally, let's also be mindful of our farmers. If they catch a window to resume harvesting operation, let's get out of their way. Let's let them have a smooth passage through our community. And anything that we can do individually, if anybody has the ability to step out of their job for a few days and help with truck driving, whatever it may be, to get this crop in, you know, if we can go all hands on deck and partner with our farm families at this time, it's a big deal. And so we'll get through this. We always do, we always have, but let's really, again, thanks to everyone who's done so much so far and whatever we can do going forward in all these areas, let's do it. That's all I got.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you. Jason, all the trees that snapped off this last weekend, is the city going to pick any of those up or we're going to let the citizens haul them?
Starts Thursday.
If the residents would like to haul them, that's fine, but as soon as we get done with our fall cleanup, we're just kind of finishing up here today and tomorrow. We have plans on going around picking up all the branches and trees and stuff, so we'll be picking that up and then any last-minute like carpets and things like that. I know some folks just now started getting water in their basements like within the last couple of days, so we'll be picking those up too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's it.
What about the electronic and paints and whatnot?
That we cannot take anymore. They were here on Saturday, so we can't hold that and store it legally, so that's...
Just so everybody knows.
Yep, that's done for them.
Piggyback off that, I had a Craig McNell ask me if we could do maybe two hours mid-week, the week that we do that. You know, instead of doing just all day Saturday, if we could do a couple hours Wednesday night or something.
Oh, we could look into that.
You know.
For next time.
For next year, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else, Mr. Vedder?
Oh, thank you.
Dale.
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Riappell.
I'm good.
Mr. Johnson.
Just agree with the mayor. You couldn't have said it any better. He's been doing a pretty good job.
Mr. Grassel.
I'd also like to thank all the crews that have worked through the last couple of days and especially responding to the citizens' requests that they've had an issue or something going on that they went and helped them out and took care of them. And I know they appreciate it. I've talked to a couple of them that really thanked and the quick response that they had. They were really surprised how quick it was, you know, crews came around, so really appreciate it, everybody.
Mr. Murphy.
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Demers. I have nothing unless anybody has any questions. Anything from department heads? Mr. Gertie, you know? Anybody else have anything? Mr. Gertie, Mr. Wilford.
Mr. Wilford and I annually go and visit businesses around East Grand Forks. This is the third year we've been doing the Grove, Minnesota visits and I will email to all of you a copy of the report, of the PowerPoint, but we just want to hit you with and let you know a couple of the high points. Barry, do you want to do it? Basically, everybody's in good spirits and doing well here and that's really good news and they enjoy doing business here.
Yeah, we visited 13 businesses this year. It was completed August through September. We identified different community needs, legislative needs and economic trends. And then also several firms that need some additional follow-up because they have some expansion plans and Paul and I'll be working with them on that. Company information, really the conclusion is the companies are very stable, locally controlled business environment, adequate expansion space, and we have adequate business and industrial park space for our current needs. And then under the product and performance, overall, the past year, six of the companies we talked to have increased sales. Only one had decreased sales and six of them had stable sales. So again, local companies are diversifying and they're doing very well. Workforce information, four of the companies expect they're going to have an increase in number of employees. No one's going to decrease in the number of employees and eight of the companies are going to be stable. So again, stable workforce, slight growth expected during the course of the next year. Workforce skills, are you having difficulty recruiting workers? Nine said they are, three said they weren't this year. So again, that's been a recurring theme the last several years. And then the last slide, and then I'll let you read the rest of it on your own. If you have any questions, you can sure call Paul and I. Does your company have plans for new investments? Nine of the 12 companies that we visited said yes, they do. Two of them are planning new facilities. Seven are planning major equipment purchases. And then a couple of those that are doing that are also planning to renovate or expand their current facilities. So the conclusion is, is East Grand Forks companies are really in growth mode or stable. We don't... We don't really see anyone really on the downside or decreasing, so all really good news from our visits this year, thank you.
Dale, did you enjoy the visitation? Pardon? Did you enjoy the visitation when we came and saw you in your business?
I did, I did. I think, I should ask you, did you enjoy it? I probably don't want you to hear.
It's always a pleasure to go out and talk with our business folks and, you know, with the present time and everything, we don't get to go out and do it as often as we'd like to, but it's always a pleasure to go out and if anybody ever wants to, just give us a call, we'll be glad to stop by or they can come in, whatever, we're glad to do this. But we like to stay in touch and do what we can and then learn issues, whatever issues there might be, so we can look for ways to resolve those issues. And if they're looking to expand, we talk with them about how they can get with funding. One of the things I should point out is the economic development is trying to work much more closely with Water and Light now and Kevin Hatcher from Water and Light accompanied us on several of the visits and that was very beneficial, we were able to talk about Water and Light programs as well as other programs that are available.
Yeah, a lot of the businesses really appreciated Kevin being with because he was able to update him on some of the rebate programs for new LED lighting and that was really helpful to him. We considered him on a couple of those that we knew he would be potentially. Right person to be there. We also included our legislators on a couple of visits too, where we again knew there were going to be some issues likely that would be affecting specific businesses in St. Paul. So we tried to include the last couple of years, some people like that and if any of you are interested next year, you're more than willing to go with us on a visit or two if you'd like.
Yeah, it's good to have you out there because nobody ever comes out our way too much out there, so, on 2/20, so it was nice to have you out there and visit and see what the operations are.
Learned a lot about your business, so you guys should go visit his business, he's actually impressed, really impressive.
Well, it's our pleasure and we enjoy it and we appreciate the time that you've set aside, all the businesses have set aside for us.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have an idea, you talked about 13 that you've visited, is that like X percentage or do you have a running total of how many? It's kind of, I'll back up, it's hard with, not everybody has a shingle and, you know, and a footprint or whatever.
We work off a list of chamber members and we supplement it with companies that are not chamber members, so we, the chambers list is about 120, about 120 and then we supplement it with the businesses that have not yet joined the chamber or have decided not to join the chamber, so that we, we do it and we talk about which businesses. We ran into a couple snakes this year where businesses were so busy that they couldn't take the time to sit down and talk with us, that, that's a nice problem to have, that they're busy like that.
I think, I think over the three years we've done this, we've visited most of the primary sector employers, there might be a couple we haven't, but if they're bringing new wealth, in other words, they're selling their stuff outside of our market, outside of our community, we have visited most of those, because those typically are the ones that are looking to expand and have that opportunity to really grow and employ a lot of new people, so we've, we've hit all of those or most of those and then now we're kind of broadening our berth a little bit and eventually we'll get to all of them.
Okay, and have you had any repeat?
Yes, there are some businesses, there's one business we visit every year, but.
It's our largest employer.
And for our primary sector businesses, we try to visit them every two to three years.
That's good.
Every, every couple of years. And then we try to visit other businesses on a more periodic basis every, and we'll be looking to do this every four, five, six years.
Yeah, and we visit American Crystal every year, I know it's our largest employer and they drive a lot of our local economy.
Hopefully they keep doing it.
Yeah, we were, we were involved with the job fair this year, first time ever we did that and didn't think it was going to turn out very good, but we did get one application today, so that was, oh, that was worth it to be there because that's more than we've gotten in a long time, so.
Good.
It's good to see you guys working together and it's, Barry, thanks for extending your reach even outside some chamber members to serve our community, we appreciate it.
That's important.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, you realize that Barry and I are also working on the market capture work and on the, a lot of the workforce work right now as well, so there's a lot that's going on.
I see Paul a couple times every week.
It's good to see you're involved in East Grand Forks.
Glad to be over here.
I remind him once a week when he walks by.
Anybody else have anything at this time? Any questions? Thank you so much.
Yes, there is one other thing. Two weeks ago, I'm on the Polk County Housing Board and two weeks ago, we had our annual meeting, one of the things they announced at the board meeting is, and I'm going to read it to you, the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines, Iowa has awarded Border State Bank a $315,000 to be used for owner-occupied housing rehab in northern Minnesota, includes Polk County. The funds will be administered by the Northwest Minnesota Multi-County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Funding will be available to assist the estimated 35 low-to-moderate income households in need of home repairs with a $9,000, five-year forgivable loan at 0% interest. In order to receive the funding, dollar-for-dollar matching funds are required, so you'd have to provide $9,000 if you're own. Those can be from homeowner funds, private or bank loans or funds with another program and for information, they contact, they need to contact Northwest Minnesota Multi-County Housing and Redevelopment Authority at 218-637-2431 and there are two extensions listed and we were going to put this onto the EDA, onto the EDA Facebook page and we'll make sure that gets posted so that everybody is aware of it, particularly in times that people are having rehab with the flooding that they're having. So if they, if they need some money for doing that, this is a source of funds, it's very timely.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Question, I saw that the website update went through today, everything go well with it or?
As far as I know, everything's fine, there are some things that still need to be updated, staff is working on their own pages and trying to update that. Content cutoff was done in August, so I don't know if some of you noticed, I know Mr. Johnson noticed that we have agendas and packets as of August 20th, I did upload the one for tonight, so that is up there. I'm trying to find a different way to actually group it by year instead of have all of them listed individually. But yeah, take a look at it, see what you like, see what we need to add. I know there's some pages that need some work that haven't been touched since 2009 when they were done, such as our local organizations and transportation page and, you know, what do we want to showcase in our community, what kind of groups, different things, so yeah, take a look at it. As far as I know, there might be a few little glitches that we got to work through, just, yeah, at a staff level, nothing you guys got to worry about, but if you see something and, you know, let us know, but otherwise, take a look at it and let us know what you think.
One other thing I was thinking about when we were, I was talking to Jason about getting notifications about the branches and stuff out, do we have an idea how many people are on our push notification list?
When it comes to a news flash, I, I'm not 100%, I think it's 409.
Or in our emails or text?
Either email, text message, just receiving the notification in some way.
I was just thinking, it might be a good idea for us to maybe have a, some sort of a little marketing push or an agreement amongst council and staff to say, let's try to build that number up to, you know, there's 8,000 people in town, maybe up to 3,000 or something, I mean, just thinking about the branches and things, you know, it's a good, quick little reminder that people can get whenever we have something to push out. I don't know if there's a good mechanism for us to do it, but I think if we put our heads together, we could get that word out, get people to sign up for those push notifications and I think it would be real beneficial. Last thing, Water Light is looking at painting the water tower on the north end and they are kind of taking suggestions on ideas of any type of marketing or any type of design that we'd like to put on the water tower, we've heard everything.
You probably know Northland is very interested, I don't know if you got that, but Northland is very interested in participating.
I have a little bit of a problem with that.
Our new logo would be nice.
Yep, just, just so you're aware of it, that President Bona fired back that they would enjoy to be at the table in that conversation at least.
And that's, that's up for the council to decide, but I, I just have a little bit of a problem with that.
Perfect.
That's all right, but just put it into your own thoughts, you know, if there's any type of thing that you've seen that was, that you liked, now is the time to do it, probably won't happen for a little bit longer, thank you.
All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.